Morning, Vice Chair. Both myself and Heather Springer is on the line as well, and she's going to be assisting us. And just for the record, you will be presiding today, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome back, Heather. And thank you for assisting the committee the other day and then today again.
Good morning, Mr. Walker. You're welcome.
Chairman, good morning, Delegate Freeland.
Good morning, Delegate Freeland.
Oh. Calling from West Mesa, Crown Point.
Just for your information, Chairman, Vice Chair, Walker will be presiding today.
There you go, Che. Thank you. I'm calling in though.
Yes, good morning, Che.
Good morning. I'm going to be heading south down towards the route. I got to go down to the landfill down there and take some stuff down there. So I might lose service through the canyon, but I'll jump back on as soon as I get service, okay?
Eva.
Good morning, Chairman, K. Allen's online.
Yes, good morning, Sutula. Gaze is Thomas Walker.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, everybody. Delegate Stewart's online.
Good morning, Delegate Stewart. Chairman Nez will not be attending today's meeting. We have four members, including myself. That is a quorum. So Mark, Delegate Freeland is driving, and he might be in and out, but I think for the most part he'd be in attendance. So we could start the meeting now. Staff, can you provide a roll call for us?
Can you hear me? Good morning.
Yes.
Okay, this is Heather. I'm going to go ahead and do roll call for RDC. Honorable Rick Nez. Honorable Wilson Stewart.
Here.
Honorable Wilson Stewart is on the line. Honorable Thomas Walker.
Present.
Honorable Thomas Walker is on the line. Honorable Herman Daniels. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Here.
Honorable Mark Freeland's on the line. Honorable K. Allen Begay.
Delegate K. Allen's present. Thank you.
Honorable K. Allen Begay is on the line. Vice Chair, you have four members on the phone call.
Mr. Chair, I'm on the line. Delegate Daniel.
Okay, we have five members of the Resource Development Committee on this call. This is our regular meeting. Today's June 9th, 2021. Time is a few minutes, 9:07 a.m. So this meeting's called to order. And we have the roll call conducted here. We're assisted by our Legislative Advisor, Ms. Begay. Assisted by Heather Springer also recording. Yes.
Che, just for correct. Eight right now. I think you might be on Arizona time, Che.
Okay.
Definitely.
My house. Yeah. Thank you for reminding me. 10:08. Delegate Freeland.
Okay, Che, I did give an invocation. This morning as well. I don't know if we could use that.
A question. Oh, yeah, okay. But she can say for letting us know that.
I'm sure you included everyone. Your prayers this morning, then the business we have before us today, and our people, our leaders. Our people. At the Navi meeting or council sessions. Announcements. Advisor, do you have any announcements for us?
Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I believe there's two meetings that are happening today. One is for the Navi work session as well as Budget and Finance has their Permanent Trust Fund meeting today happening. And the other one is on Friday, RDC has a joint meeting with work session with HES in Albuquerque at the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And that meeting will start at 1 o'clock. And so hopefully, RDC members will be able to be there in person for the meeting. The other one is I send you copies of your June calendar. And next week we do need to consider moving, rescheduling our June 16 regular meeting to the 15th. So that RDC will be on travel to Colorado Ranch with Budget and Finance Committee. I thought that meeting was going to be a joint work session. However, it's they called for a joint meeting and RDC has two members that have committed to attend the meeting there. So we do need two members as well, so that's something to think about. Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Hi, Edia.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Begay, for the information there. Other committee members, any announcements? Okay. Speaker's office is on the call also. Miss Arbisosiyako, are there any announcements that you would like to share with us?
Chairman, K.
Uh, Hanko Shin. Go ahead.
I'll be monitoring three calls today. I need to, if Speaker's not going to be on the Travel and Tier Budget Council session. They're having their travel caucus meeting as we're speaking, so I'll be going back and forth. Too, but that's where I'll be at, monitoring a lot of the calls this morning. Chairman, Edia, when you let you know.
Okay, Hanko Shin, thank you for letting us know, Delegate Begay. We'll keep that in mind. Although this is Osiyako, you have any announcements from Speaker's office?
Good morning, Vice Chair Walker. Thank you. This is Melinda. The only announcement is that we are work session is starting right now. We're going to hear from Notani Development Corporation, the COVID Relief Navajo Hopee nonprofit organization, as well as Intu and Dene College. And then also the Permanent Trust Fund Budget and Finance Quarterly Update Meeting is also currently underway. So those two meetings are being held right now. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Arbisosiyako. Those announcements. Introductions.
Che, good morning. I just wanted to say good morning to everyone for everything that you all do each and every day for us delegates. I know we can be a handful. We can be a lot, but sometimes your work goes unappreciated, but we do appreciate it very much. I'm in Crown Point this morning. I represent eight chapters out here, Crown Point. And then to the west, I have Nantes Gage, and to the north, I have Bassenti, White Rock, Chaska Yelo, Big Sag Day, Lake Valley. I don't have a biggie, Herfino, and the nine. The eight chapters that I represent here. Good morning to one and all. Let's have a good meeting and Edia, thank you, Che.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart, introductions.
Good morning. Dooshanaike. Dooshmaesuke. Aldo online this morning. Chair Wilson Stewart. Though Kodo, the best must answer. Kodo, the honest in the lot, I represent for the finance agency on the RDC committee. And I will be on the road today as well, but right now I'm in Wind Rock. Thank you.
To honorable Stewart, Honorable K. Allen Begay, introductions.
Good morning, Nana. I'm a RDC member, staff and everyone. Representing five chapters, Little Mountain, Tachigugat, Talani, Conwood, Nazlini, and Mini Farms. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels, introductions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kodo. Herman Daniels, Jr. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Edia, Thomas Walker, Jr., Vice Chair of the Resource Development Committee. Though Bird Springs, Loop, Pilani, Chairman, and Coleman chapters. Advisor, though, Ms. Begay.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Che, Shammy Begay. I'm calling from the office. I'm in the office today. Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Begay. Ms. Springer.
Good morning, Heather Springer. I am a Legislative Assistant with the Office of Legislative Services. I'm assisting this week for Teresa Woody. She's out. And I'm in the office as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Springer. Speaker's office staff. Please, introductions.
Good morning, Vice Chair Walker, members of the Resources and Development Committee. Currently Legislative Staff Assistant for Speaker Damon here in Wind Rock, Arizona, and thank you for having us on the call today. Yeah, thank you, Shida.
Okay, thank you, Mayes, for the introductions. Joining us is our Chairman. Chairman Nez, introductions. Honorable Nez.
Thank you very much. Honorable Vice Chair Walker for facilitating the meeting. Although, Edi, been. Honorable members of RDC. I really appreciate all of you excusing me for today, but I'll listen in for a while until I lose reception again. So, yeah, thank you.
Before I ask others for introductions, are there any of our colleagues on the call, colleagues from the 24th Navajo Nation Council? If so, we'd like you to introduce yourselves. Our attorneys, any of our attorneys on the introductions, please?
Good morning, one and all, and I will go on mute now, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Khan, for the introduction. Are there attorneys from the Office of Legislative Council? I understand there's two new attorneys that have joined staff. We sure would like to hear from them if they're on the call.
Mr. Vice Chair, they are attending to other issues right now, and when they come in, maybe perhaps at our next meeting, I will be sure that they introduce themselves, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, most certainly. Thank you for that. Office of the President and Vice President, are there any staff or representatives? If so, introduce yourselves. The BIA. Curly. Is always on the call, introductions.
Good morning. I'm sorry, Vice Chair. Good morning. This is Gerald Curly, BIA. Now for reasons. Mr. Holliday is also participating in the Tivik meeting this morning. So if there are any questions, follow up, I can take note of it and relay that message back to BIA leadership.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Curly. We appreciate that, and thank you for joining us this morning.
This is Superintendent Lester Sosci, BIA, Eastern Navajo Agency. I'll be monitoring the call if any question comes up also. But we also have a couple of meetings that are ongoing, so we'll be jumping, at least for me, I'll be jumping on those calls too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sosi, for joining us. Other Navajo Nation divisions? Division staff, directors.
Good morning, Vice Chair and members of the Resource and Development Committee. This is Ivan Bassenti with the Ranch and Eastern Land Management Program.
Thank you, Mr. Bassenti, for calling in and being with us here. Any other division staff, programs, departments that are on the call with us this morning? Introductions, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Leo Watchman, Department of Culture.
Thank you, Mr. Watchman, for joining us. Any others?
Yeah, Honorable Counsel, Delegates, this is Harrison Billy with the Service Mining Program. We're also listening in.
Thank you for joining us there. Any others who would like to introduce themselves?
Good morning, Vice Chair and other members of RDC. This is Rowena Charamaya, the Delegated Director for Minerals Department on the call.
Thank you, Ms. Charamaya, for joining the RDC here for our meeting. Any other introductions?
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair. This is April Quinn from DOJ.
Okay, good morning, Ms. Quinn. Thank you for being with us here this morning. Any other introductions? If not, then we move on to the next item. Item three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Staff, can you give us a reading of the agenda, proposed agenda?
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, Resource Development Committee of the 24th Navajo Nation Council, teleconferencing RDC regular meeting of June 9, 2021, 10 a.m. Agenda. Presiding, Rikenaz Chairperson, Thomas Walker, Vice Chairperson, one call a meeting, order roll call, invocation announcement, two recognizing guests and visiting officials. Re-reviewing and approving the agenda. Or reviewing and improving the journal for May 26, 2021. Five receiving report, A, an update report from DNR Minerals and Nomination Department adjustments regarding the NGS slash SRP asset. This may require executive session. B, update report from the Navajo Nation Travel Ranches Department on the drought and the impacts on the tribal ranches. Six old business, none, seven new business, A legislation, zero. 89-20 prime sponsor is Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr. B, approving to reschedule RDC June 16, 2021, teleconferencing regular meeting to Tuesday, June 15, 2021, at 10 a.m. C, approving to reschedule June 25th Leadership Meeting with NDOT and NECA to Friday, July 2nd, 2021, at 9 a.m. D, approving a teleconferencing leadership with Navajo Nation Travel Ranches Department and Eastern Navajo Land Board on Friday, June 25th, 2021, at 9 a.m. E, approving a work session with Division and Community Development on June 28, 2021, at 9 a.m. Recommended location, Albuquerque, New Mexico, or NDOT. F, approving a leadership meeting with Navajo Nation Land Department, General Land Development Department, NQA, HPD, Minerals, and BIA with regards to streamlining home site lease processes for Navajo families to receive water, wastewater, electric services. Recommended date is Monday, June 21, 2021. G, approving a leadership meeting with WSR Drought Insurance Department, with Department of Agriculture and Resource on June 9, on Tuesday, July 9, 2021, at 9 a.m. A, conclusion committee meeting, other announcement, adjournment. Mr. Vice Chair, there's one request for a meeting that needs to be added on to the agenda, and that came from Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding a work session on the climate change. I believe that was requested during a a meeting that we had with Department of Fish and Wildlife. We do need to add that on to the agenda for approval. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Begay, for the reading of the proposed agenda. Committee members, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Che, Freeland motion.
Okay, Honorable Freeland motions. Is there a second? Stewart, second. Chairman K, Honorable Stewart. Hanko Shin.
Vice Chair, you do need to do an amendment one to add the leadership meeting with Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, so committee members, as advised by our advisor, Ms. Begay, one item to be added under new business. Scheduling a meeting with Fish and Wildlife Department regarding climate change.
Okay, motion to.
Okay, Honorable Freeland motions, is there a second?
Chairman Kellin.
Okay, Honorable Begay offers the second question. Questions, comments on adding one, there's this amendment? Questions, comments? If not, let's take a vote. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote?
Green.
Green, okay, Honorable, how do you vote? Is that green?
Honorable, green. Honorable Kellin Begay, how do you vote?
Chairman Kell, uh, votes green, thank you.
Okay, green. Honorable Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Green, okay, so we have a vote of support and favor, opposing, none. Vice Chairman not voting, so that motion carries. We have amendment number one. Amendment? If not, then back to the motion.
Okay, well, I don't have a, I don't have an amendment to offer, but I just have a question. What date was the Eastern Land Board? I'm sorry, I heard you must say something, but what date was that again?
Uh, advisor?
It, that is set for Friday, June twenty-fifth. I have it on the calendar as a recommended date, for June twenty-fifth.
Nine AM? Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then let's take a vote, how do you vote, Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Green. Honorable Stuart, how do you vote?
Green. Green.
Okay, Honorable, how do you vote?
Kellin votes green.
Honorable Begay votes green, Honorable Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Green. There we are, we got to call for Chairman, Chairman Nez. If you're on the call, how do you vote, sir? Yes, he's not on the call here at this time. Um, we have a vote of support and favor, opposing, there are none. Motion carries and Vice Chair not voting. We've approved our agenda for today. And then moving along, we have reviewing and approving journals. Uh, Journal of May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, staff?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Teresa sent copies of the journal to you last week, and I also resend it this morning. So you should have copies of that with you. And it just requires an approval from your, from the committee. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Begay. Uh, committee members, we have a journal, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Issue approved, is there a motion to do such?
Okay, motion, Freeland.
Okay, Honorable Freeland motions, is there a second? Second, Stuart. Honorable Stuart, thank you for that. Uh, okay. Take a vote on this item. How do you vote, Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Green. How do you vote, Honorable Stuart?
Green.
Green. How do you vote, Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kellin votes green, thank you.
Green. Although Chairman Nez, if you're on the call, how do you vote? Okay, so he's off the call. Although we have a vote of support and favor, opposing, there are none, and motion carries, Vice Chair not voting. Uh, now, song, though, this, item five, receiving reports. They from DNR Minerals and DOJ regarding the NGS slash SRP assets. Then this may require executive session. Presenter, Dr. Rudy Shabala and others. Uh, staff, Ms. Begay, earlier before the meeting, I had called and we kind of briefly mentioned this report on the agenda. Although, given that we had also received a similar report in previous meetings. Maybe you can mention that again here, Ms. Begay?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, initially, RDC, I believe, Delegate Daniels requested for this report. And in the past, I believe, a portion of the report was presented in executive session. This morning, I, yesterday and this morning, I text Dr. Shabala, and there was no response. So maybe if he's not on the call, then we could just defer it to the next meeting. If not, we could do a leadership meeting. That will be up to the, the decision of RDC. Mr. Chair and Vice Chair, back to you.
Okay, thank you for that, for some clarification there. Let me call for Dr. Shabala. He's on the call, then we can see if he's going to present on this item. I know the Ministry Department is on the call, DOJ is on the call also. I don't know if they want to provide any statements here or give, actually give the presentation.
Honorable Vice Chair, this is Rowena Charamaya from Minerals Department. I can give you some background information on the NGS assets. What the department has been involved with in the past. So the Navajo Generating Extension Lease, within that lease, it had five assets that the Navajo Nation retained. And those five assets were the lake pump facility, the railroad, some fences, some associated power lines, and the air monitoring site. By letter dated December twenty-first, twenty eighteen, former President Begay submitted to Fort River Project a list of three additional assets that the Navajo Nation wished to retain. And these three additional assets were communication sites, a warehouse and administration building, and a helipad. So when the new administration came in, SRP provided President Nez the opportunity to add to the list or revise the list, and to which President Nez did. He revised the list of what former President Begay had asked to retain. At this point, from my understanding, this aside, from there, this assignment was given to J.T. Willie to act on those assignments. That's the, that's the background information that I have. The Minerals Department was not actively involved with the NGS assets. And I believe that April Quinn with DOJ can provide a little bit more information on this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charamaya. Uh, Ms. Quinn, want to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and honorable RDC members. What Rowena summarized is, is a good overview of, of the NGS assets. And where she left off was that SRP, as a courtesy to President Nez, asked if there were any additional assets that he and J.T. Willie would like to keep. And in a letter dated, when was this? June of twenty nineteen, President Nez identified a few additional NGS assets that he thought was valuable, were valuable in keeping. And those were the, the roads, the administration building, the warehouse, the maintenance building, the engine house, and some buildings related to the railroad tracks that the nation had already decided to keep. And I can email RDC a list of all of these assets, just so you have, have that handy. Because I didn't, I don't have a written report or a formal presentation because I wasn't sure what specifically RDC was interested in with respect to these NGS assets. But I will send you a list of the assets, just so you have them, have the list available. A key thing to keep in mind is that even though the nation has agreed to keep all of these assets, most of them are still currently under the control of SRP because they're still doing the decommissioning work. And only a couple assets have been turned over to the Navajo Nation as of right now. And those are the railroad tracks and the warehouse. They were able to turn over the warehouse because that's kind of off to the side of the NGS site. It's not in the middle of all of the decommissioning work that's going on. So they were able to turn that asset over to the nation. So we currently are able to use that asset. A concern with respect to the warehouse and the other buildings at the NGS site is that there is no, there are no utilities associated with these, with these assets because it was NGS that was providing the electricity to the buildings. And now that NGS isn't operating, there's no electricity. And then the same thing with, with water. The, the power, the power plant itself was providing water to these facilities as a component of its operations. And now that NGS is no longer operating, there is no water to service these buildings. So that's something that needs to be considered. You know, the cost of bringing utilities to these buildings once the nation figures out what we are going to use these assets for. As far as what we're going to use these assets for, that really is a discussion that needs to be had with Mr. J.T. Willie because he is the one who has been tasked with determining how we are going to use the assets and redevelop the NGS site. It's not, it's not DNR, it's DED. With respect to DOJ, I mean, there's no, there are no legal issues going on right now with respect to NGS. We have a decommissioning team. We're keeping an eye on, on everything, making sure they're doing everything in accordance with the extension lease. I think it's, you know, a team of technical people that meets periodically, and Minerals is on that team. But they meet periodically with SRP to make sure everything is going, going according to plan and in accordance with the requirements of the lease. So that team meets periodically. But with respect to the assets, that team, you know, I don't believe is involved in any discussions going on with the actual assets. So that's, that's in the hands of J.T. Willie. So I'm not sure what RDC is interested in, in discussing today. But, you know, it, it may make sense to have another meeting at a later date and have J.T. Willie present to RDC on the actual assets. So thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and RDC members.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charamaya and Ms. Quinn for the information. And again, some, some clarification. I believe Honorable Daniels had requested this item as a report to RDC. Uh, Honorable Daniels, are you still on the call?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, thank you. Vice Chair, honorable members of Resources and Development Committee. Here at the grassroots level, there are chapters, chapters along the railroad tracks. There's Kaibato, there's Copper Mine, there's Sachi. There's the railroad track. What is their position? Economic development. To utilize the railroad tracks. Talking about other assets. The former NGS. So there's the railroad tracks, there's the pumps. I don't know, there's, there's other things that are given to the Navajo Nation. So on top of Black Mesa, the former Peabody Coal Company. There's some structures that are, that are still there. To have a, a meeting with the chapters, see what their, their, their position is on the railroad tracks. I appreciate the presentation that was made.
Honorable Daniels, so some of the information we could receive from Division of Economic Development. It, obviously, that's the important part of what, what is, what's on the agenda today. That reporting from their, their perspective, their interest, their concerns, and so forth. And then, of course, with what Honorable Daniels stated here, the local. And then, of course, with what Honorable Daniels stated here, the local interests. Local communities, local chapters. What is of interest to them as far as these assets are concerned. Honorable Daniels. Other committee members to invite J.T. Willey and his staff to, again, speak to the assets here and plans for. Plus, the local interests. So to bring them together and to get, I guess, a bigger conversation going on this. Honorable Daniels and committee members. Other advisor.
Vice Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I believe that it will be up to the decision of RDC on whether they want to receive a report from J.T. Willey. And so what I'm doing, what I'm going to do is request from April a written list of what the Navajo Nation is going to retain. And I'll forward that information to you all. But we can also do the same with J.T.'s, Willey's office, and how they're working with on getting the other assets for the Nation. We'll ask for a list. And again, it will be up to the committee to decide whether to schedule another leadership meeting or add the report, J.T.'s report to next week's meeting. The other concern I have is that when we do leadership meetings, our regular meeting, everyone is on different calls, because we have so many conflicting meetings that are scheduled. And that has an impact on the standing committee's regular meeting activities. Everybody's going to be on several calls when we do the leadership meeting. Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Begay, for that advisement.
Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Vice Chair, yes, thank you very much. Mr. Vice Chair, other committee members. That is so true. Committees, every Wednesday. That's our meeting. I don't know, we have other meetings, but this is our meeting, our day to discuss or act on legislation. Other meetings are important as well. Maybe we can have a leadership meeting. With Mr. J.T. Willey, Division Director for Economic Development. So yeah, a bit of that Natural Resources. So I think. I don't know if I can make a motion to have a leadership meeting or defer just to the next meeting. Or, but next meeting. We have this travel. Maybe a week after next week.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Daniels. Report issued. We can vote to accept the report, provided today by Minerals Department and DOJ. We can add on an item to the agenda, probably a detail in our agenda here. So Honorable Daniels, a motion to accept the report.
I'll make a motion, yes, yeah, Vice Chair, thank you.
Okay. Motion to accept the report. Is there a second?
Jay, I'll take it Freeland, I also have a question too.
Okay, motion made by Honorable Daniels, seconded by Honorable Freeland to accept the report. Questions come, it's Honorable Freeland.
Jay, thank you. I'm sorry, I had to stop right here by Smith Lake for service. Could we also, I don't know, this may be a question to Shamaa, is also look at a special RDC meeting, just on this topic alone, and have this one agenda item. You know, maybe if we find time at Wolf Springs even, have an RDC meeting there. Maybe that would not, maybe it could work too, I don't know. Depends on what Fish and Wildlife's agenda is. So just a special meeting request as well, a separate leadership meeting. That way, we could take action if we needed, if we need to sometime. So just a suggestion, thank you, recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Freeland. Advisor, you want to respond to Honorable Freeland's question?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, the two days that we had identified with Department of Fish and Wildlife for RDC and Budget and Finance Joint Meeting, they already have an agenda established. I don't know whether if they will have time available for RDC to have a separate meeting there, special meeting. The other concern I have is that several members of RDC have already expressed that they are not inclined to traveling up there because of the distance. So even if we were to call, set up a special meeting, I don't know if we will be able to establish a quorum for that meeting. Because I've only have two members that are committed to travel up there for the BNF Joint Meeting. Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Advisor Begay. We can take up this question again at the end of our agenda. We choose to add this on to the agenda. Setting up another meeting, leadership meeting, or a special meeting is recommended or suggested by Honorable Freeland. In the meantime, report accepted. Any other questions, comments on accepting the report? If not, then we can take a vote. Honorable Freeland, how do you vote? Okay, Honorable Stewart, how do you vote?
Green.
Green, okay, Honorable Kialan Begay, how do you vote? You might be on mute, Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Green, okay, back to Honorable Freeland, how do you vote? We're accepting the report. You could text that, your vote. Honorable Begay, how do you vote?
Chairman Kialan, it's green.
Okay, so we have, Chairman Nez, I don't know if he's still with us on the call. How do you vote, sir? Okay, so we have a vote of three in favor, opposing none, Vice Chair not voting. So that motion carries. Next item, here's another report from the Navajo Tribal Ranches Department on the drought. It's on tribal ranches. Presenter is Sir Ivan Bessenti, Program Manager for Navajo Nation Tribe.
Mr. Chair and Vice Chair, just for your information, I sent the PowerPoint for this presentation to you this morning. And that's the number two email that I sent you regarding the meeting documents. So you have a one, a number two, and a number three email that went out with the meeting documents. Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Chair, I dropped my call, please, please let me back on. I did vote green last one, thank you.
Okay, so that vote changes four in favor.
Mr. Chair, we already voted. Mr. Chair, we already voted, and he can vote on the next one. We already called for the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that verification, Advisor. So moving on, Mr. Bessenti, floor is yours for the report.
Good morning, Vice Chair. Can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good morning, Vice Chair, Honorable Members of the Resource and Development Committee. I can introduce myself again. My name is Ivan Bessenti. I'm the Principal Extension Agent, and I oversee the ranch and eastern land management under the Department of Agriculture with the Navajo Nation. I want to base my presentation, just as stated, on the agenda in regards to an update from our program in relation to drought and the impacts on tribal ranches. So if you guys do see the PowerPoint presentations, I sent that to Shammy this morning. And as you all are aware, you know, we have been impacted by the drought for the past twenty-plus years, but the severity of it has just been increasing from year to year. So when we're talking about the ranch program, that's the reason why I prepared the presentation around what I have labeled as Ranch Management Plan. So within our eastern, Ranch and Eastern Land Management Program, you know, we do have myself, and I do have staff. Kathy Smith, she's our GIS technician. We have Mr. Ferdinand Nota, he's our Program Project Specialist. And our equipment operator, Amos Brown, out of Crown Point. So, for staff. So going into the update, and like I stated, you know, the presentation is based around the drought. And one and foremost is the Ranch Management Plan that we have. All of our tribal lessees, it's a requirement that they submit a Ranch Management Plan to us at the time that they're submitting and applying for any of the ranches that they're ranching and operating on at this time. So the Ranch Management Plan, we have on our website. And also, there's a format, a suggested format, that we put out there for them to follow and then give a detailed report or a detail on each of the topics that we have. So one and foremost is going to be the livestock management plan. And within that, we request for debris preference in their production goals. You know, what is going to be their herd health management? The marketing plan for the cattle that they have. And also, the annual livestock count that we'll do, but also that they have to comply with, and also their record-keeping. And that would be with the, in regards to their livestock. So for the Ranch Management Plan, what we're, the topics that we do have out there are, you know, what is going to be their method of the control grazing? A lot of the ranches that we have are on a unit basis. One large pasture. There are a few of the ranches that are already cross-fenced, or some of our lessees have taken that step forward and improved their pastures where they've broken down the one-unit ranch into several pastures by way of, you know, installing cross-fencing. Also, we look at the conservation strategy to increase carrying capacity, fire prevention practices, water development and maintenance, noxious weed control, roads, how are they going to manage those? If there's existing ones, or if there's any new ones that will be developed. And then, one and foremost is the biggest issue facing us in today's time is their drought management plan. So each of the lessees will put together this Ranch Management Plan. And one key vital, one vital, important thing in this whole plan is the drought management plan. So at the time of applying for any of the ranches and upon evaluation of these leases that various ranchers are applying for, this is all. Have submitted to us. So also in the Ranch Management Plan is going to be the Natural Resource Plan. And that's taking into consideration the wildlife habitat that is within the ranches, the water features, any cultural site, and then the medicinal plants and herbs, and other natural resources that are on the ranch at the time. And then there's also a plan for infrastructure. Infrastructure, we. Um, infrastructure, we are looking at any of the water resources. There are wells that we have on, on the ranches, windmills, water lines. And of course, there's some of fencing, and corrals, barns. As well as, some of these ranches were hurt, at the time of purchase, they had ranch camps, also known as headquarters. So these are all stone buildings, old infrastructures. And there are a few that have been upkept by the current lessees. They've made tremendous improvements to some of them. And then there's some of them that have been dilapidated for, for many years. And since, uh, any of these lessees have moved on to the ranches, some of these infrastructures have been, uh, have fallen apart, so. And then also, you know, plan for infrastructures. How do we plan, how do the ranchers plan for solid waste issues too? If any. And then also in there, they also list on how they're going to work with, uh, other entities. And, you know, there's many land statuses within Eastern Agency, but also on the tribal ranch. Also with Bureau of Land Management. With our nation, the Navajo Nation. And there are lessees that work with USDA. And with some of the USDA programs such as the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and also the Farm Service Agency. Also included in there is the United States Forest Service. State land departments for both Arizona and New Mexico. And then we also work with some of the private landowners as well. So those are the key points of what we want to see in any of the ranch, uh, management plans that any of our lessees submit to us. And all our leases are, uh, based on a ten-year lease. And lessees welcome to continue forward for another ten years once their ten-year, their first ten-year term is up. And upon evaluation of that, and that would also require myself and our staff to go out to the ranches and do an assessment of the ranches, meet with the ranchers, and have them give us a tour of the ranch. And also let us know what improvements they've done, what are some of the key issues that are happening on the ranch. And we also want to see the improvements they have done within their first ten-year, tenure. And, uh, and based on that, you know, we'll make Okay, I was just muted, can everybody hear me still?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I was automatically muted, so. So, um, so we'll, our selection team does go through all our first ten-year leases, and then we move forward, making the decision to move forward with a particular rancher for a second ten-year term. So that's, that's where, uh, uh, when we do, do our assessments, okay? So, at the time of their first ten years, moving into their second ten-year term, this Ranch Management Plan that I just went over and gave a little review to you all, that's what would need to be updated. And as you all know, you know, the drought has been continuing to, to progress from year to year. And then a lot of these Ranch Management Plans have to change, just as you all stated earlier with, uh, Fish and Wildlife talking about climate change. So, climate change has been impacting a lot of our range out there, within, within our ranches, with both on the Arizona side and also the New Mexico side. So, so without further ado, I'll go ahead and move on to the drought monitor. Um, I hope you all have the, uh, the PowerPoints before you. But the next slide that I have on there is the drought monitor that we have for the state of New Mexico. They do have illustrated on there, from June 12th, 2018, uh, I have a snapshot of the drought monitor that is put out by the University of Nebraska. And that's one well-known, um, drought during drought from state to state. This current year, 2021, um, significant, uh, impacts on the drought from 2018, as you all see, the whole county of San Juan County and half of McKinley County. D1, those are the levels of how the drought is, is monitored. The D0, you know, is what they call abnormally dry. And then D4 is an exceptional drought, so D4 is the worst. So that's what's illustrated on the, uh, the PowerPoint there, on the two illustrations. For the current year, 2021, um, three-quarters of San Juan County, and I would say about 25% of McKinley County is in a D4 state. And then for the D3, it's about, I'd say about 15% of San Juan County. And then a D2 within San Juan County is probably about 5 to 10%. So, the whole county of San Juan is not in a D4, but majority of it, it is, it is at this time. And, uh, for McKinley County is also, you know, it's between a D3 and a D4 state, so. But as a rancher, um, as most of, I believe, RDC committee members, you all are ranchers as well, you know, from winter to present day, you know, we've had hardly any precipitation at this time. And our winter was pretty mild, so we didn't really bank on any of the, uh, snowmelt to really refill a lot of our earth banks throughout there within the state of Arizona side, or even within the New Mexico side. So that's, uh, how our lessees are, that's what our lessees are experiencing as well. So the next slide is the monitor, uh, picture illustration for the state of Arizona. We're looking at Apache County and some of Navajo. Apache County, I would say about 45% is in a D4 back in 2018. And then for Navajo County, we're looking about, about the same too, about 45%. But currently, right now, in 2021, we're looking about, about forty Whereas Navajo County, about 95% of Navajo County is in a D4. And then if we're looking at the state of Arizona, you would look at Big Boquias, and then also our ranch over at Peaks Ranch, over in Flagstaff, and some of Winslow. Those are in a D3 state. So when you do a comparison between 2021 and 2018, the current year, 2021, we see majority of our counties, of our tribal ranches in the state of Arizona is mostly in a D4 state. So it's, it's at its worst, okay? So what have we done from our office, from our ranch in the Eastern Land Management Office? Um, what have we done for our tribal ranches out there, what have we done for our lessees? We've done a lot of education and outreach. We do have quarterly meetings with our lessees on a quarterly basis, even through the pandemic. We also, uh, had our meetings, listened to our lessees on what their concerns and their issues that they were facing out there. And it was a very tough time through the pandemic, where, especially when the nation had shut down. And especially the roadways were shut down. But nevertheless, ranching, our ranching industry had to continue. And I think we all know that, you know, across Navajo Nation. Those of us that have livestock, whether it be sheep, goats, cattle, horses. You know, the way of life had to continue, no matter what, no matter the pandemic. And I tell you one thing, for those of us that have livestock, I think we turn to our own livestock. That's where the self-sustainability came about. Knowing that way of life, knowing of having livestock, we turn to our own livestock for food. We turn to our own crops for food. So that's where a lot of this ed- education and outreach that we have done from way back when we were born, to when we were adolescents, teenagers, adults, and so forth. Everything that we've learned really helped us get through this pandemic. So as livestock producers, and for the education and outreach that we have done for our lessees out there, we brought in industry professionals prior to COVID. We brought professors from various, uh, universities. We brought professionals also from vendors that we deal with, pharmaceutical companies. Because in the livestock industry, we do vaccinations, we do herd calls. We have to see that all of our livestock needs are met. The health portions are met, so we vaccinate. At any time that any of our animals are also ill or sick, we look towards the pharmaceutical companies. So we've had them come in and educate our producers too. So this was all prior to COVID. And hopefully, we move forward to where we're open fully again, to where we can bring them back in. So that they can help us assist our producers by talking to them, educating them on what's new out there. What are some of the programs that we can move into? So with drought, also comes diseases, not only within the livestock, but also it tends to bring out a lot of the toxic and the noxious weeds that are out there on the range. Invasive species start to grow a lot faster than any of the, uh, the quality forage that we need for our livestock. So that's where we provide that education and outreach for all of our lessees on a quarterly basis. So every year, on a calendar year, we meet with our producers four times a year. But nevertheless, uh, we do have constant communication with them, whether it be through email, phone, or even to, in today's world, you know, texting. So we provided that, uh, education and outreach to our, uh, our lessees. And through that, um, we've asked our lessees last year to reduce their stocking rate of the severity of the drought that was impacting our range, that was impacting the livestock out there. So by requesting that our ranches reduce their stock by 20%, we also reduced their lease fees by 20%. So we did that for 2020, we're doing that again this year. And just right after the nation had closed down, we had assisted our, uh, lessees, our tribal ranchers with hay supplements. We made a big purchase of hay from Nappy, the one-ton bales. We gave out two bales per ranch back in 2020. And prior to COVID, and even after the nation had lifted some of the restrictions, we continued to give fencing material to our lessees. We haven't covered all of our lessees yet, but we've also assisted them with, uh, fencing material. E-posts, barbed wires, bays, clips, to help them improve their fences, their boundaries, or begin to install the cross-fencing for better management of the ranches. And through our department here, not only for the tribal ranch side, but as a department as a whole, we provide transportation assistance, hauling cattle to sale barns. And when we're talking about sale barns, we've assisted Navajo ranchers by hauling their cattle to Cortez, Hertland, Berlin, Sun Valley. And this all had to be coordinated, whether it be through tribal ranches, that would be coordinated through myself. But if it was the Navajo Nation as a whole, that request would come from the grazing officials getting a hold of us, asking and requesting for services for some of individuals that are out there that needed assistance in hauling. Right now, as we speak, we're installing wind, uh, solar, converting a lot of our windmills to solar. We have five big, uh, five, uh, pilot project ranches that we're wanting to convert windmills to solar, and that's with waterline distributions for better management of the ranches. We've got, on average, we're looking about 4,508, 4,508 per ranch. And if you only got one water source is not too well. So when we're talking about the five pilot projects with waterline distributions, we're trying to get water distributed equally, so that there's better utilization throughout these ranches. So that 100% of the ranch would be used, instead of all of the livestock and all the cattle being, usually within a two-mile radius from a water source. So when we're doing these conversions, uh, we're installing, uh, waterline extensions. On the other hand, we're also working with water resources with Najant Tariq. And we've got nine windmills on a list. And we're addressing ranches that have shared windmills. So if I have two ranches that share one windmill, we're looking to take care of those ones first, so that we can install one solar unit. So that we have better, um, improved pumping plant. So that we can better utilize the sun's energy to pump water from these wells. I've gotten about three ranches, three of those ranchers have continuously called, I would say probably the past three years. There's times that the wind never blew, even though they had windmills. So that's the reason why we've gone to solar, so we want to, uh, convert their windmills over to solar as well. So. And then also improving cattle genetics with our tribal ranches. We have a lot of producers We have a lot of producers that are producing cattle, calves, for the Navajo Beef Program. I think all of our delegates have heard of the Navajo Beef. Navajo Beef is a label. And the demand for Navajo Beef has been increasing from year to year. And that just shows that there are cattle buyers out there that are in demand for Navajo cattle. So if we take that one step forward, and we're just talking about tribal ranches, we have about half of our ranchers that provide cattle for Navajo Beef. But as the Navajo Nation as a whole, I would say there's more than thirty to forty ranchers that supply beef through the Navajo Beef Program. They've taken that step, vertically integrate their small herd and improve their genetics. And they've improved their genetics by utilizing the tribal ranch bulls that we lease. You know, we re- we run a herd of forty-two registered Angus bulls with high-quality genetics. And we have ranchers out there where they have improved their calf crops. I would say we've improved their calf crop from maybe a seventy-five percent calf crop up to about ninety-five percent calf crop. And even in some of the most drought areas of the nation, even within Western Agency, we've improved that. So those are some of the things that we've done to assist not only the tribal ranchers, not just the lessees, but as a Navajo Nation as a whole for those livestock producers out there. So the next slide I'll go into is the management, how do you manage through drought and during drought? We've got some short-term decisions that we can do and some quick decisions that can be done. And first and foremost is going to be reducing your stocking rate. So by reducing your stocking rate, you're reducing the pressure that we have on our range, our forage out there. And ways to do, to do those would be, you know, selling to yearlings. Because yearlings would be more hardy, they do consume a lot more forage than some of the cows do, depending on how old the cows are on a ranch. We can reduce by sending the cattle to the feedlot. And as we are all aware, at Nappy, our closest enterprise to the nation, does have a feedyard. Right now, it is not in operation. There was an individual that, uh, we were, that Nappy contracted the feedyard out to. And at the time that the gentleman, Mr. Dyer, was operating the feedyard, that was finally a time that the tribal ranch program was able to utilize the feedlot. Not only ourselves, but some of our tribal lessees put their cattle in there. And then there were also some Navajo producers within Greater Navajo that were able to put their cattle over at the feedyard. And we, we paid, the last, the last year that we paid for our bulls to be in there was, we were paying about three twenty, three dollars and twenty cents per head per day. And I believe some feedyards are more expensive than that. But for cows, they were, cows were able to be fed there at about two twenty per day or two forty per day. So that's one way. And that's one, one of the short-term decisions that, um, our producers can, uh, you know, reduce the... Also looking at culling. And when we're talking about culling, we're basically selling off some of the cows, whether it be the old cows. And we can also look at some of the less productive pairs. So when we're talking pairs, we're talking about a calf, cow, cow-calf operation. So it would be the cow and the calf. Our ranchers could look for other pastures. And we do, I do have some of our lessees that have looked beyond the Navajo Nation. They are leasing some areas and some land over in Cortez. Some are leasing some land over in Ignacio. And some have even looked at leasing some land irrigated pasture. And we have, you know, we have irrigated pasture with our neighboring states, you know, such as, um, over in Cortez and in Ignacio, and then also within the Albuquerque area as well. Producers can wean their calves early. And then also doing some early pregnancy checks. And by doing early pregnancy checks, we can have a vet go out there or an experienced individual to pregnancy check a lot of the cows that are out there. So we would call and get rid of a lot of the cows that are still open, that aren't bred yet. And then that way, we can retain some of the, uh, the cows that are pregnant and keep them, uh, retain them for, uh, for our herd. So those are ways that we can rest, uh, reduce the grazing pressure on our ranges out there within the tribal ranch. Another way is supplementation, supplementing the herd with hay, supplemental feed, whether it be grain, whether it be supplemental tubs. But then there is a cost to that. And the cost can get pretty costly too. And as everybody's aware, you know, even a three-twin bale, we're looking already about sixteen to seventeen dollars each. And they continuously decline in prices as well, as well as the supplemental tubs. But a general rule of thumb from a rancher would be, don't try to supplement your way through a drought because you'll go broke. And, but we as Navajo producers, we see ourselves in town every weekend buying hay, buying feed to supplement our livestock operations. So that's one short-term decision as well, but it is, it does come with a cost. Long-term management, what can we do in the long term? And like I stated earlier in my presentation and in my update is, in the past twenty years, we've been operating through a drought. And I, and within my presentation, I have a picture illustrating the drought back in 2018, the same month of June, and then the current month that we are in right now with 2021, the severity of the drought is just about the same. So as a producer and as we talk to our tribal ranchers, we have to effectively plan and how we're going to make those management decisions moving forward. What can we do for next year? Right now, we're in 2021, how are we going to manage for 2022? I know some of our lessees are really running very low on the forage availability that they have out there on the ranges. And we sure hope for precipitation to happen. The month of April has passed, the spring has passed. We're into June, May went by, we haven't... I don't believe we've even gotten one inch of rain within a few days. A half an inch of rain within one hour, that causes runoff. We haven't even had half inch of rain here in Wonderock. There, we've got lessees that have effectively managed their herds so that they can have forage. So as we move forward, we may, as a program, have to ask some of these ranchers to defer some of these ranches, move their cattle off. There is opportunity for some of our ranchers to move their cattle over to Peaks Ranch over in Flagstaff. Peaks Ranch, we utilize the US Forest Service permit in lieu of the fee land that we have right there north of the peaks. We renewed the Forest Service lease this year. We have a cattle association, the Net Cattle Association, the core group are cattle producers that are out of Black Mesa, that were affected by the Peabody coal. The permit that we have with the Forest Service, the carrying capacity is three hundred and seventy-five head. But upon the renewal of that lease, upon assessment of the forage availability on that ranch, we were asked to reduce the stocking rate by twenty-five percent or even fifty percent. We chose the twenty-five percent reduction. So that moved our carrying capacity to two hundred and eighty-one head. Right now, the association forecasts that they can, they have about a hundred and twenty-five head of cattle that they can put on for May to October fifteenth. So anybody that's looking and seeking forage for their cattle right now, we're referring them to the Net Cattle Association over at Peaks. There, it does come at cost too. It's about four dollars and forty-six cents per head per day for anyone putting in cattle within that association. But they do have the grass. They can be in there for the remaining, at this time, I would say, four more months, a little bit more than four months. But there is forage available there. So that's an opportunity, that's an alternative for some of our lessees. Not just for our tribal ranches, but we've also referred Greater Navajo, Big Res that eat nilla. We've had producers from Crystal in the past years put cattle in over at Flagstaff. But the association also needs help with running those cattle too. So it's not just a drop-off service. A rancher can't just drop off their twenty head with Peaks Ranchers and then come back in October to pick them up. They have to continuously work with the association, helping round up, helping haul water, help with branding, help with vaccines, all that sorts of stuff. So that's an avenue.
Uh, Mr. Brusanti?
That is available to our, uh, ranchers.
Mr. Brusanti?
Yes.
Uh, can you begin to, uh, close your report? I, uh, forgot to mention that we have a twenty-minute limit. But, um, you can begin to just summarize your closing there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. So strategies for tribal ranches. And, uh, we're looking at twenty percent stocking rate reduction. Again, if we continue to move, if our, if the drought continuously progresses. Additional stocking rate reduction for 2022 if we continue to be in a D-three to D-four state. Implementing culling of the herds is what we're going to be asking for as well. Inventory counts will be heavily monitored within the tribal ranches. We do have livestock water needs that we are in collaboration with Department of Water Resources. And even since the pandemic, we have better relationship with Tarek, Najem Tarek, to really help us move forward with maintaining and then also be more responsive to, uh, work orders that are submitted on behalf of our tribal ranches. And then out of our program, we purchase materials, parts, and supplies for water resources. And that includes sucker and then also looking at complete windmill heads as well. Working on solar conversions of all livestock wells. We have eighty-eight wells on, on, uh, tribal ranches by itself. And we're looking to convert each and every one of them to solar. We're looking at water distribution on these ranches. Like I stated earlier, we have wells that are solely plumbed to one drinker, one tank, with an overflow to a pond. So we want to distribute a lot of these, uh, waterlines to increase the utilization. That's where we can increase some of our carrying capacities. But at the time, you know, the precipitation is kind of, uh, hindering that. We want to protect our range vegetation resources out there as a landowner. We want to keep an eye on the vegetation. So that's why I was saying that we may need to ask some of our ranchers to defer some of those lands. But on the other hand, we're going to have to somehow compensate them. We can do improvements by ranch fencing, cross fencing. Livestock feed and protein and mineral supplementation, we spoke of that earlier. As the drought continues, I know we're going to be faced with noxious weeds, invasive species growing back out. We're going to be, have to tend to controlling a lot of the brush that are growing out there as well. We need to increase control of hunting and poaching on ranches. Removal of unauthorized livestock. And a lot of our ranchers do have adequate forage out there available as well. We have horses that have been coming onto the ranches. We have unauthorized cattle from neighboring communities. We even have a situation over at Herrera Ranch in Toadjali. We have Laguna's cattle coming into the ranch. And very surprised to do an assessment last week at Herrera Ranch. A lot of ranchers would sure like to say, I have grass that's belly-high. Herrera Ranch does have grass that's belly-high. That's the reason why Laguna's cattle is coming in. We need to take better control measures of that. We have some testing that we did at Herrera Ranch on some of the cattle because of trichomoniasis. So when those results do come in, we're going to be sitting down with the Laguna Tribe, with their cattle association. So also another strategy is for ourselves, also our lessees, to work with USDA programs, with the Farm Service Agency. Farm Service Agency does have a coronavirus food assistance program. They call it CFAT-1, CFAT-2, and CFAT-3. Farm Service Agency does have a livestock forage program. Farm Service Agency does have a livestock forage program. Water hauling assistance, commodity deficiency payment, and also loan opportunities available and emergency loan operations, opportunities as well. And then working also with Natural Resource Conservation Service. Working and trying to ranch through a drought. There are some conservation practices that our lessees can tap into. And then also into CSP Conservation Stewardship Program. That's where we can defer some of these ranches. And lessees can also apply for these programs and they can defer their ranches and still get paid by USDA for not having any cattle on the ranch. So those are some of the strategies that we're looking at and then we also educate our ranchers about. And then this coming Friday, next few days, we do have a ranch meeting that I'm holding for our lessees. And that's one of the basic things that we're going to be talking about, the impact of the drought. And most likely during that meeting, I'm going to ask for a task force that we can develop within our own lesse, for our own lessees. They can devise a task, uh, team in how we can mitigate and address the, the drought situation at hand. So that's where we're at with our trouble ranch program. And not only can we do this type of education outreach for our lessees, but also we work with the Eastern Land Board and eastern ranch communities as well. So we've been educating our land boards so that they can get the word out to their producers, their permittees out there. So that would be, uh, my update for this morning and to you all as, uh, honorable members of, uh, Ran, uh, Resource Development Committee. I, I stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bessenti, uh, for the presentation. And, uh, committee members, um, this is accepted for motion to accept the report. Committee members, is there a motion?
I'll motion Jay Freeland.
Second, Stuart. Please, thank you. Okay, second by Honorable Stuart. Thank you.
I do see Herman Daniels back on the call, so you do have a quorum now. We had about forty people on the call and majority of them got knocked off and so we finally got seventeen people calling back in again, so. But you do have a quorum.
Shazam, I want to make a comment as well. Well, Mr. Bessanti, if you are back on the line or the staff from Department Ag, thank you for that very detailed report, the PowerPoint presented to us today as RDC members, and sharing as much information as you can with us regarding the cattle ranchers of the nation and what practices are being done and also what is foreseen for these ranchers as well on how to improve the market for the for navigation by beef growers as well and looking at that side of it. And thank you for all that is then being done and also for water resources too for assisting in those areas of the wells, the solar wells and also helping out in that area to make sure that our livestock are taken care of not only for our wife but several ranchers in the area. So, thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I did send him a copy of the agenda informing him that the legislation was on the call. But you can do a call again and second, first call, second call and then we can defer, we can move on to the next item and then we'll come back to it to him again. And after that, if he doesn't answer, then we can defer to the next meeting.
Motion, Stuart Shazam?
Excuse me Chairman, the Vice Chair. Excuse me Chair, are we on the item? I lost you. I couldn't hear what you were would that that would be your decision whether they offered, they could do the work session in Albuquerque and that's basically going through their plan of operation. And they would like to have an in-person meeting. And they want to do Albuquerque and they will follow the CDC meeting protocol or out, they're willing to meet with the committee at NDOT conference room as well. And it'll all be person meeting depending on which location you all decide. That would be nice so that I could submit a memo and requesting for travel included in that memo if you do decide to go to Albuquerque. The location arrangements will all be done by the Division of Community Development. Mr. Vice Chair, back to you. Vice Chair. Vice Chair, before you move on, this is a request that came from Delegate Stewart and there was a meeting that we had in the past with Mr. Tena Jenny and Representative from the WSR drought insurance. I don't recall requesting for a meeting between the Department of Ag, but Delegate Stewart would like for the committee to meet with both of these insurance, I mean Department of Agriculture and WSR to talk about the drought insurance. And so that is the reason why we have this request on the on the agenda today. It is Mr. Chair, Vice Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. This is Shani. You did add one more item, which is H approving a work session with Department of Fish and Wildlife on the climate change. And I the open date I have is June 22nd and it'll be at nine o'clock.
Second Stuart.
Chair. Chair, who by whose second? I didn't hear that part. Okay, thank you. Chairman. Vice Chair, this is Shani. I text him and he apparently is chairing citizen meeting. So I just mentioned to him that the matter will be deferred to the next meeting. Then he agreed to it. I just received his text and he's okay with it. We'll defer Tuesday.
Green.
Thank you. Thank you. Be safe out.